Everyone, the time is six oh two. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Vice President Ferguson, could you do the invocation, please?
Yes. Good evening, everyone. Father God, we thank you, and we give you the glory and the honor. We just thank you for allowing us to see another sunrise and another sunset. And we thank you for being our refuge and our strength and ever-present help in the times of trouble. May your will be done in this meeting, but not only in this meeting, but in this nation. Let your kingdom come and your will be done here on earth. We ask that you endow us with your peace here in the city and in the United States and all states and cities there and with peace and with your understanding and with wisdom. Bless us and keep us in the days to come. And Father God, I just ask that you will bless every participant on this meeting tonight and their families, all the citizens of Glen Arden and all who are affiliated with us and who do business with us. In Jesus's name, I pray, amen and amen.
Amen. Madam Clerk, could you do the roll call, please?
Certainly. Council President, if I may remind everyone that this meeting is being recorded. Councilwoman Fareed?
Here.
Councilwoman Gillon?
Here.
Councilman Hairston?
Here.
Councilman Haring?
Here.
Councilwoman Jones?
Here.
Council Vice President Ferguson? She's here. Councilwoman Ferguson?
Here.
Council President Curtis?
Here.
All are presented accounted for.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So much.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion or opposition?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilmember Harry?
Yes, I have a question. I just like to know, why was a public hearing canceled last Friday when I was trying to get my legislation through last week so I could meet these deadlines that I had for Glen Arden Day? I'm just trying to figure out what's going on.
Do you have a comment on the motion on the table as to adopt the agenda for?
Yes, I would have to make a decision on how I vote on this agenda. I just want to know why it was canceled last Friday when it was all set up so that I could meet the deadlines for these rides and this food for Glen Arden Day? And I want to know why it was canceled. So let me have a decision on what I have a move on this agenda.
Well, Sarah, we're not going to discuss something that was last week. If you have a comment on this agenda, then you can speak on it.
So you're not going to tell me why you canceled the meeting? Is that what you're saying? So citizens don't need to know why. So if the rides get canceled and the food is canceled because I don't meet the deadline, I just want them to know that I did what I had to do in my due diligence to get it to them in time. We've been putting off these rides and this food for a bit, and I tried to get it done in a timely fashion and had these people on hold for a while. So I just want to know.
Point of order, Councilmember Harry, do you have a discussion on the agenda for today?
You asked the question, you did it, and you don't want to tell the people why. Okay, we can go ahead and move on. Let's go.
Okay. Any other discussion or opposition? Councilmember Jones?
I didn't have any opposition. I just wanted to know, was there an availability meeting for the last week's meeting that he's speaking of? Because I wasn't asked to if I wanted to do that, but we can move on. Thank you.
Thank you. Any opposition to the agenda?
I'll make a voice vote.
Sure. Vice, Council Clerk?
Councilwoman Fareed?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gillon?
Yes.
Councilman Hairston?
Yes.
Councilman Haring?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jones?
Yes.
Council Vice President Ferguson?
Yes.
And Council President Curtis?
Yes.
The vote is unanimous.
All right. Thank you, everyone. So tonight's public hearing is to hear public comments on pending legislation. Pending legislation on the docket, we have four. R dash zero one dash twenty twenty five, a resolution to contract with Shaz Laros Hospitality for catering service for Glen Arden Day. R dash zero two dash twenty twenty five, a resolution to enter into a rental agreement with Fantasy World Entertainment for rides for Glen Arden Day. R dash zero three dash twenty twenty five, a resolution to authorize the use of $250,000 of American Rescue Plan Act funds towards educational supplementation for the residents of the city of Glen Arden. And finally, R dash zero four dash twenty twenty five, a resolution authorizing the use of $50,000 in American Rescue Plan Act funds to purchase school uniforms for eligible children residing in Glen Arden. Citizens, if you can raise your virtual hand, I will call on you. You'll have five minutes to discuss any of the to speak on any of the four pending legislations that's on the docket for the council to vote on. With that being said, I'll turn this part of the agenda over to citizens' comments. Please raise your virtual hand if you know how to. If you do not, you can unmute yourself and call yourself to be, I mean, asked to be called on, and I'll recognize you in an order that you spoke or raised your hand. So with that, the floor is now open for citizens' comments. Mr. Lewis?
Good evening, Board and fellow residents. Yes, I'm strongly in support of the motions. I think, you know, as a taxpayer, and I think we all recognize the expenses that occurred. And this is exactly what I believe the act is for, as far as giving people that's supplemental to help keep our kids well-equipped to be competitive in the educational space, whatever their school is, as well as for those parents who are looking for additional opportunities to enhance their children's education kind of outside of the traditional classroom. I think the supplement is a great avenue to help subsidize that for people. And of course, the uniforms, I think, is a great idea as well for those children who are. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Ms. Gray?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Cynthia Gray, and I am also strongly in support of this resolution, R zero three twenty twenty five. I know for myself, my personal experience, my children do tutoring, and I know it helps. It's helped bridge the gap between what they learn in school and reinforcing that. So when they go back, you know, they feel more confident about what they've learned. Not only that, I work very closely with an elementary school nearby as a PTA leader, and I know that a lot of the feedback that I get from the families that live in our area is that they would like some extracurricular tutoring that they could have access to. So I know that having this would really help bridge the gap for a lot of these families, and I'm in very strong support of it.
Thank you, Ms. Gray. Are there any other public comments? And when you come on, if you could state your name and what ward you're from, that would be great. I apologize for not mentioning that in the beginning.
Yes, I'd like to say something if possible.
Sheila Adam Stafford?
Hi, everyone. My name is Sheila Adam Stafford. I'm on the Board of Education here in Prince George's County, and I just wanted to come on to support this resolution. We 100% need more tutoring opportunities for students, and I'm really grateful that the Glen Arden City Council is providing that to our community members. So please, you know, I consider this in conjunction with a lot of the other tutoring services that are happening in our community. More support for students is 100% necessary. So thank you so much for introducing this legislation.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments? Ms. Wilson?
Yes, good evening. I am, I would like to get clarification on on the resolution concerning the $250,000 for tutoring. I don't know if, I don't know if I'm understanding this correctly or what, but on page, I think it's on page two, item eight, it talks about applicants who are, you know, people who make application for their children. And it's saying, from what I'm getting from it, it says that those who those who choose to do tutoring with those two companies that are within the city, their applications will be considered basically first. It's as though if I put in an application for my child, and I don't want to go through those two companies, but I want to go with someone else for tutoring, and five other people put in their applications after me, all of those people who are, who come after me, their applications will be processed first before mine. Am I understanding that correctly? I'm not sure. Because if that's the case, I don't think that's fair. Because I don't know how many children this money will service, but if you continue to put everyone who is only going to deal with the city's resources for those two companies, then that does not give way to others who choose another path, another company for tutoring. To me, it seems like it's not giving them the same opportunity. Am I understanding that correctly?
Thank you. I will turn it over to Councilwoman Fareed, and I believe she'll answer your question. Councilwoman Fareed?
Hi, thank you, Council President. No, that is not correct. The preference is for Glen Arden-based and Prince George's County-based tutoring. I'm actually not seeing where you're seeing two companies mentioned. It says that preference for tutoring service will be given first to vendors based in the city of Glen Arden and then to vendors based in Prince George's County, when possible and practicable. So those vendors, what I believe you're referring to are Kumon and Mathnasium. Those are two big tutoring services in the city of Glen Arden, but those are not the only tutors that are based in the city of Glen Arden.
Well, okay, well, could I say something else, please?
Yes, ma'am. You still have three minutes left.
Go down. Okay, you see, do you see the bullets that are there? It says under eight, preference for tutoring services. Applicants, the second bullet, applicants are encouraged to select the Glen Arden-based. And you're correct, I was speaking about those two companies that you mentioned. And then there's another bullet, if multiple applications are received on the same day, applications utilizing Glen Arden-based tutoring vendors will be processed first. That's what I'm speaking of. So if, to me, that gives rise to everyone else who we're dealing with for the Glen Arden-based companies, their applications will be processed first and not someone else's who wanted to go somewhere else in Prince George's County for tutoring.
Council President, yes, ma'am?
Yes, yes.
So let me just provide some context. The American Rescue Plan Act funds are to assist those who have been impacted by COVID-19. With this particular piece in the resolution, we're looking to address two things. We're trying to assist the children of the city of Glen Arden. We're also trying to assist the businesses within the city of Glen Arden, who were both duly impacted by COVID-19 as it relates to education. So if there were tutoring services where people were going to those when COVID-19 happened, they lost revenue because nobody was going to them. So because these are American Rescue Plan Act funds that are designated for use by the city of Glen Arden, for the city of Glen Arden, that's where the idea of the preference comes in. People are not obligated to use those, but it is a preference, and I think it's an appropriate preference so that we use the ARCA funds for, again, the businesses that are in the city of Glen Arden. And it's not, those are not the only two. There are a number of tutoring services in the city of Glen Arden to help them. And also, even if it wasn't that they were impacted from COVID-19, I think it makes sense for us when we have funds available to try to use Glen Arden-based vendors. They are a part of our tax base. They are a part of our constituency, and so supporting them, we want businesses to do well in the city of Glen Arden and to be able to operate. And so that's why that preference is there, but it is not precluding anyone from using vendors that are outside the city of Glen Arden. And the order of preference goes vendors that are in the city of Glen Arden and then vendors that are in Prince George's County and then others. So I definitely would encourage people who, if they're looking for new tutoring services, if they don't have an existing one, to leverage ones that are in the city. Not only will it help the city in terms of using the funds at home, but the proximity. I don't know that it would make sense, for example, to pay for someone who lives in Glen Arden to go to a tutor in Brandywine. I don't know why we wouldn't look for our vendors here first.
Excuse, if I may.
Ms. Wilson, final comment?
Perhaps you're not understanding what I'm saying. It gives rise to you, it seems, you end up discriminating against. Yes, you might encourage people to use that, but if they want to use somewhere else in Prince George's County, we, it's, my thing that I understood was that we're trying to help the children. The children should be number one and then the business. But if we're pushing the business, it gives rise to some other thought patterns that, why are we trying to just help the business? If the children is the key. So that, I'm just saying, the way that this is worded here, it gives rise to discrimination.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson.
You're welcome.
Ms. Lewis?
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Arlene Corbin Lewis, Ward three. I just want to share my appreciation for this piece of legislation as a parent who has three children who go to school in the county. Having gone through COVID-19, which was obviously very difficult for many parents, many people across the county, I have noticed education gaps for my own children and just recently, you know, have recognized the need for tutoring for my children. These are children who've gone through talented and gifted programs, have gone to Glen Arden Woods, and still, even through the pandemic, came on the other side of the pandemic with some learning gaps. And so this particular supplement would certainly help me and other parents who have noticed that there have been learning deficiencies as a result of the pandemic. And I'm also appreciating Councilwoman Fareed's dual support of both the children of the county and also the businesses and really have great appreciation and respect for trying to keep the dollars of Glen Arden in Glen Arden. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. Councilwoman Fareed, did you have a question?
No, I didn't have a question. It was a key element that I left out, though, as it relates to using the businesses in Glen Arden, particularly one of the businesses. When I reached out to the businesses, one in particular was very responsive and very receptive, and that was Kumon. So much so that they have offered to waive the enrollment fees and registration fees, any fees associated with with this, with what you would typically pay if you were enrolling for anybody who's in this program. So they are very eager to work with us as a resident of the city of Glen Arden and doing that, waiving fees, that money coming out of their pocket is their good faith effort to ensure that the children of Glen Arden have the same opportunity. Kumon is a very expensive tutoring service that is out of reach for a lot of people. And I'm talking like $300 a month, $150 for reading, $150 for math. But the gains that children get from that program are exceptional. And I don't think that the children in the city of Glen Arden should be exempt from that opportunity because they can't afford it when the city has available funds that are specifically for that use. And so I did just want to commend Kumon as being a business in the city of Glen Arden that is willing to partner with us by waiving fees. So they're not just trying to get rich off of the city. They're really trying to help the students, and I really appreciate that.
Thank you, Councilwoman Fareed. Are there any other public comments on the four resolutions that are part of our agenda tonight? Mr. Lewis, so the rules are that once you have an opportunity to speak, that you have five minutes. And if you surrender your five minutes, then that is it. I will come back to you if we have more time, but want to open the floor up to anyone else that has any other comments or questions regarding the pending legislation. So hearing none, is there any opposition from councilmembers for allowing citizens to comment twice? I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Council, Vice President Ferguson, what'd you say?
I have no problem with them.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Vice President Ferguson. Ms. Curtis?
Yes, I don't know if everyone can hear me. I just wanted to comment, I think it's, you know, I just want to think.
What's important?
Can you hear me?
Yes, if you can state your name and what ward you're from, and then you have five minutes.
Okay. Believe I'm from Ward four. My name is, is that correct? Karen?
No, you're from Ward three. You're not a part of this.
Ward three, and I appreciate Councilman Fareed and, you know, the work that she's doing in these legislations. I really think it's valuable for all of the children in Glen Arden. I actually attended the Back to School event last year and helped, you know, volunteering. And, you know, just to see that the kids that were out there in need of various, you know, various things, got to talk to some of them and hear some of the needs of the parents. So I just think this is right in line with what's needed and to give them kind of the boost that they needed. And this is across, you know, schools in our area, whether it's the local schools or the specialty schools that some of the kids in the area attend. So just want to say, you know, I'm here for the legislation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Curtis. All right. Any other citizens' comments for tonight? Mr. Lewis, if you want to speak again, you can.
I appreciate and I apologize for not bringing this point up previously. And this is not directed at anybody, but one thing that I've talked with some of our elected officials, and I think it's worth noting, and I do appreciate Councilwoman Fareed's focus on keeping dollars in the county. One of the things that we face in Prince George's, as well as all the cities within it, as we pay all of our taxes that go into the large state coffers and then, you know, the equal amount is allocated per student. When you look at our neighboring counties, the Moncomerys, the Howards, the Antarundale, they are spending approximately two and a half times per student than we are. And they get that additional one and a half time amount, right, that 150% from businesses in their county putting money into it. And so I think, you know, even to the other residents' point, in supporting businesses, it does directly support our students because it makes us as a city more attractive a destination. And the more business income, business tax that we get, it makes our school facilities better. It allows us to pay teachers more, so we're getting better teachers. You know, we do have children who have ridden the bus. We have major bus shortages in this county, especially in the city. City of Glen Arden, there are two shifts of buses because we don't have sufficient bus drivers. That additional revenue from businesses being attracted to coming here is going to give greater infrastructure and it's going to give our children more resources to learn. And I think that's a really interesting point when we talk about supporting not just our children, but the indirect and then the direct support of businesses that then advances and provides more resource for our children as well. And I think that's an interesting point. And again, I appreciate the legislation being put forth. And again, I appreciate the additional time, and I do see the rest of the time.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Okay, final call before we adjourn the public hearing.
Is it too late for citizens to comment on the legislation?
No, ma'am, it's not. Ms. James?
Yes. Hi, I'm Mary Ann James Daly. I'm also a resident in Glen Arden. I have two young children who go to Thomas Pullen. And I just wanted to say that I am in support of the legislation. My son was in kindergarten when the pandemic started, and I have seen a definite impact on his classmates. And I think this kind of legislation could help give our kids a boost up.
Thank you. Ms. Wilson?
Yes, I just want to make it, I just want to make it clear that I'm not speaking against the legislation. What I'm saying is that the way that it's written, there's some things that are written in there that cause, that I think would cause an issue. And so, yes, some people might want to keep the monies in Glen Arden, but when you're talking about tutoring the children, then you have to consider if the parents did not want the child to be tutored somewhere within the city of Glen Arden, but it could be somewhere within Prince George's County because that is what was stated in this piece of legislation as well, that it would have to be in Prince George's County. I'm not speaking against it. I'm just, all I'm saying is that it would give rise to someone having the opportunity to pick where they wanted their child to be tutored within Prince George's County, if they didn't want to do it within the city of Glen Arden.
Once, I think, a lot of feedback coming from you, Councilwoman Fareed. But go ahead, if you're in a position to.
Did you understand what I said?
No, I heard what you said. And I'm just going to defer to, though I'm a co-sponsor, I'm just going to defer to the actual sponsor of the legislation, which is Councilwoman Fareed. So I'll let her answer or respond. Councilwoman Fareed?
Yes, yes, there's a multi-tiered preference. First, going to vendors in the city of Glen Arden, which again are not just limited to Kumon or Mathnasium, but to many of the other vendor services that, I'm sorry, tutoring services that are Glen Arden-based. It's not just Ward three. There are tutors all across the city. And then the next layer of preference would be for tutors within the county. And then the preference would go to tutors outside of that space. So you're right, parents do have a choice, but I think we also have a choice in how we are going to spend the money. And I think if we're running into a situation where the majority of applications are coming from outside of the city and outside of the county, then we won't have an issue of there being more preferences. It would be in that small case, but I would encourage anyone who doesn't already have a tutor that they have in mind to consider the many options that are available in the city and in the county before looking outside of the county, at the very least.
In terms of going outside of the county, I'm saying staying within the county. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Ms. Tanisha Mason?
Hi, good evening, everyone. It took me.
It took me a while to figure out this, I'm so used to using Teams. But I am from Ward Three, and I just want to commend Councilwoman Fareed for bringing this legislation. As a resident of Glen Arden, I'm in full support, especially being an educator in another school district, and then just noticing the severe impact that COVID continues to have, even though we're four years beyond it. I am in complete support. And I believe that with the tutoring option for the students, we will definitely be able to see an increase in the student achievement, their self-confidence, and definitely their self-esteem. So 100% full support, and thank you guys for bringing this.
Thank you, Ms. Mason. Ms. Foster?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Carla Foster, and I am a resident of Ward Three. And I just wanted to say that I wholeheartedly support this legislation. I am a mother of five children. And I would say that COVID severely impacted my younger three children. I have two special needs older children, but I think that this is a wonderful opportunity for families like me, where you have to spread a lot of your resources to a lot of your other children. And I just wanted to say thank you because this is wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Foster. Are there any other public comments on the pending legislation tonight? Okay. Mary Ann James Daly?
Hey, sorry, I just wanted to say one more thing that about whether we use tutoring services within Glen Arden City or whether we use tutoring services within the county. And I think this legislation actually would help to encourage you to use tutoring services like Kumon or Methanadium, which are within the city. Because honestly, the prices for that tutoring can be prohibitive. But by getting some support from the city to be able to get that start would, one, boost the businesses which are within our city, and also encourage people, families like mine and others in the city, to use those services. And I'll stop talking now, thanks.
No, the comments are welcome, thank you. All right, final call for public comments on.
I have, I have a question. Who's Neil Crutchfield?
Okay, Ms. Crutchfield. Minutes to, five minutes to speak on the pending legislation.
Okay, I could have a question. So I just was able to get on, I couldn't even get on there when there was a meeting. Can you, Erica Fareed or someone explain to me the program that's being offered, or the legislation? Can you hear me?
Sure.
Yes, Councilwoman Fareed.
Sure, I'd be happy to. So this legislation is setting aside ARPA funds to help assist with educational supplementation for the children, the youth of the city of Glen Arden. Each child would be eligible for up to $3,000 to use for tutoring services. And, you know, we're not specifying which subject, but the areas of, you know, that have been of major concern are typically math and reading. We are also allowing these funds to be used for, sorry, test prep. So for example, SAT prep, ACT prep, things that will help the students in the city of Glen Arden, you know, get into the schools of their choices. The idea here is that we do not want our children to be held back because of not having access to adequate educational services. And I'm, that's not a knock on any of the schools. The schools are doing the best they can, but we do have a significant gap that the children have experienced in learning because of COVID-19. And they're learning new material while also trying to close that gap. And that's a difficult thing to do without any supplement. The $3,000 is for tuition. So that just means the rate at which the tutor is charging. So if there are any fees associated with it, like enrollment fees or cancellation fees, those would all be the responsibility of the parent. We're also allowing for some of the funds to be used for devices. And that is because many times the tutoring services require a device, like a tablet, for them to do their work on. Or if they need to do virtual tutoring, having that available. And I know virtual tutoring would be a preference probably for parents who, you know, are working and not able to shuttle their children back and forth. So we did not want to offer the service and then tell parents that we couldn't provide them with the tools to do it as well. And that, when we're talking about tools, that also includes materials. So for SAT prep, as an example, there are typically books that go along with that. So being able to purchase those. The way the program is set up is that the vendor would need to be a legitimate vendor. So Erica Fareed can't just say, oh, I have a tutoring service now, and I'm going to charge you $3,000 for the school year. These businesses need to be bona fide businesses with all of their appropriate documentation in place, and the city will pay those vendors directly. It is similar to some of the other grants that we've had, where we use ARPA funds for, where we are paying the vendors directly. In addition, in order for us to make sure that the money is being, you know, that we're seeing what we want to see, and that's our children improving, we will be asking that parents provide a progress report throughout the year. Just, you know, that's going to be a very helpful metric for us to demonstrate, particularly to those who may have funds available at another time, to give us through grant programs, et cetera, that this is really working and helping the children of the city of Glen Arden. Preference is given to vendors based in the city of Glen Arden. And then a second level preference is given to vendors based in Prince George's County. It will cover the full school year, so nine months from September through June. Trying to think if there's any other key elements. That's, that's about it. So right now, it's set for $250,000. The application period will be about a month long. And the applications will be reviewed on a first-come, first-served basis. It's for children who are residents of the city of Glen Arden, as evidenced by their school record. And you have to have documentation that you, as a parent, are a resident of the city of Glen Arden as well. I think that covers everything. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilwoman Fareed. I have just, if you don't mind, maybe a couple of questions. So if you can clarify, you said it's for every child in Glen Arden, or there's a certain number of students that we're going to take in the program? And/or, I know you said there was an application process. I think it's a great idea. I'm just concerned about the number of children, you know, as an educator for the past 32 years, the number of children that would need this service. So is there a cap, a number, or how is that going to work?
It's up to the amount of $250,000. I totally agree with you. If it was up to me, it would be even more money that we would put towards it. As we get the applications in, it will depend because it's not like we're saying you have to use this one tutoring service. It's up to that amount. So some people may have already, you know, already have a relationship with the tutor that they want to keep working with, and it may not be that expensive. My daughter has a tutor. It's $20 a class. She goes once a week, that's $80 a month. So I would not spend $3,000 if I were submitting for the Mandarin tutoring for the year. So it's based off of what program they're using and what the rates are. If they're using a program that's more expensive, then it would only be up to that $3,000 amount. But it's not, it's not that we're giving every person $3,000, if that makes sense. And I think an important thing to note here is that we're trying to reach children. And unfortunately, it does have to be on a first-come, first-served basis, which is pretty much the case for any of the programs we've put forward. We've set amounts for them. It's outside of the, and even the rebate that we gave people, that was for homeowners. So that wasn't for everyone in the city of Glen Arden. It's very difficult to have something that is, you know, for, that every single person can participate in. So I definitely encourage those on the call, spread the word, encourage people to, you know, have everything what they need and apply as soon as possible. And I think if we are at a place where we're running out of the funds sooner than we anticipated, then we should look at using additional ARPA dollars. We were given over $4 million to use towards ARPA funds. $250,000, that's 6% that we're using for the children. I think it should be a lot more.
Thank you so much. One, one last question, if you all don't mind. So that, are we, I know you said, I'm thinking deeply, I'm an over thinker. So I know you said that you would be, people can bring in their own tutor and what have you. Just my take on that. I don't know if you all have developed that there's maybe one person or company you would go to because if you, I guess I'm looking at if you're going all over the place to different tutors and all, it can get a person who has to handle this and be strategic about it. It's going to be difficult. That's just my take. I'm done, thank you so much for listening.
Thank you. Sorry, Councilwoman Fareed, did you have something?
Yeah, I was just going to say, you know, that's just the balance of choice. We have to be, you know, cognizant of what businesses to say. Even if we wanted to say everybody go to Kumon, it's unlikely that Kumon could handle every person applying, right? Every, or every person that applies that is going there. So we're not directing people all towards one vendor. We need to spread it out. And again, some people have existing tutoring relationships or situations that they would want to maintain. And this would just be an assist, a supplement to help them with it. They wouldn't necessarily stop working with that tutor.
Thank you. All right. Final call for comments. We still have a few more minutes left, if there are public comments. Okay, if not, then the time is 6:45. The public hearing is now adjourned, and we will go into our work session. Did members need a break before going into work session?
We advertise it at seven, so we can't go into it until seven anyway.
Okay. So then we'll be, we'll have a 15-minute break, and then we'll start our work session at 7:00 PM.
Council President?
Council Clerk?
Just to note for everyone that's going to take a break, well, for two things. One, it was advertised saying that there's a possibility that it may start before 7 o'clock, depending. I mean, there was language to that extent, but I understand what Councilman Herring's saying. But when people come back, they're going to come back to the same number. There's no change in number.
Correct, thank you, Council Clerk. And so we'll just be back in 14 minutes. Thank you.